Yeah, Dennis Klopso, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, November 22nd. Let the record show that we do have form, everyone being present. And I'd like to welcome and thank everyone for being here this morning. If y'all would please stand for the place of the witness.
(inaudible)
Under public comments, John, I think you, uh, we're going to talk to you about the pre-sent.
Commissioner, y'all should have a copy of the new Commissioner precincts that we're going to add for each Commissioner. We have Mr. Henney from San Antonio. They're going to give a little presentation, and we'll go from there.
The last name was?
Meeting. It's spelled M for Mike, E-E-D-I-N-G.
Meeting.
Yeah. Thanks, Judge. All right. I'm not out just. I don't know if that's. Otherwise, I'll just go. So it's this one. I can just paste it there. It's on the clipboard. Here we go. Starr County. All right. Apologies for that. So what we'll be presenting today is just the changes on the voting districts, voting precincts, based on the changes in, the recent changes in the census. So if we can go to page, is it going there? That's what my. We can, I don't want to. It's too loud. All right. So on page three, so just quickly for context, the problem that we were trying to solve here is to try and get all the voting precincts within the 4,000 voter population limits, as everybody's aware of. So we worked with John and his team to do that. So we've proposed a few options here, and I've split it out into the main areas. So from, we'll be working from west to east mainly. So the first precinct that we had before, that you can see on slide number three, that was the problem, was precinct six, which was, which was too big. It was 6,800 voters roughly. The new change is to basically split six into two precincts. You'll see, we're giving it a new name, precinct 11. So to the north of 83, I'm going to go to the next page, which shows you the lines of where it will split. For some reason, it's not updating on the screen. But on page four, you will see that basically six gets split into six and 11, south of 83. And then it goes north on Efren Ramirez Avenue, up to the border of Voting Precinct Number Three. The reason we had to go north that section was to ensure, because there's a lot of voters in that suburb on that side, and it made the numbers too big for County Six. In doing so, we were able to, with the new precinct, voting precinct number 11, we were able to ensure that within Commissioner's District Number Two, all of the voting precincts are under the 4,000 voter threshold. So estimated numbers are about 3,400 for voting precinct six, 3,700 for voting precinct 11, and just under 1,000 for voting precinct seven. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next one, which should be page five, on the documents in front of you. It's not, it's not updating, I'm not sure, but I think it's fine for now. So number five, or on slide five, the second item was 10, precinct 10, that we had to, that we basically did similar to the previous one, where we split it into two precincts, into the one what we call the new precinct number 12. So what we did there, sorry, he's just trying to, otherwise I think it's going to be easier just to talk to. Just click allow. So going to slide six, you can see that we are starting on Alvarez Road. You can see the number one. We cut across in an easterly direction, then go south on, also on Alvarez Road, east on, east on Public Marquez Road, number three, and then south on Santeck Road, up to 83. We were then cut across up to the border of Voting Precinct Number One. So in doing this, the new voting precinct number 12 becomes, has about 3,200 voters. 10 has got 24, 2,400 voters, and then Voting Precinct Three has got about 2200 voters. So that's, this solved the problem around Voting Precinct Number 10, and reducing those numbers. We then move on to slide number seven. The second, the second part of that, of that change was to basically decrease the size of 10, so as to we can get more voters into Voting Precinct Number Three. And you can see it's basically a straight line cut from the north, basically starting around the southwest corner of existing precinct number five, cutting down essentially to the 83, and then La Prieta Road, we go across to get, goes south to the border. As I mentioned, three was the problem, Charlie, and we wanted to just allocate a few more voters to that. Moving on to page number eight. This one is mostly focused around the city area, so you can see there's a red block, the bottom section on the right, where, so on the diagram, it showed us 12, or what I, I stayed there, number 13. It's number two, but number 13 is around the city area. I'll touch on that. So you can see there, we essentially drew a border around the main, main city area, forming its own voting precinct. And there, we started on the western border of the existing number one, east on 83, for a short bit, and then we went north on Fairgrounds Road, essentially going around the city on Farm to Market 755, and then going south to the southern border. So essentially creating that new voting precinct. Like I mentioned, it's shared two, but it's the new, it's a new precinct, 13. So what's nice about this, all of the Commissioners Districts four, is reduced enough so that there's more than enough capacity for the future. Then, the next item, which is the last item on the list, is Voting Precinct Number Nine, which we also split into two, mainly around the creation of additional capacity for the future, so that this exercise doesn't need to be done again. How we did it on slide number 11, is we started right at the northern, northern border of existing nine, we head south and join onto Farm to Market 2360, and then basically went down south, right to the border. What this has created is, it ensured that eight, nine, and 14, all within Commissioners District Three, are well below the 4,000 voters limit. In summary, the very last slide, number 13, gives a good overview of what this change entails. So essentially, we have created four new voting precincts. Just as a reminder, it's obviously partly to solve the problems of today, but also to plan for the future, so that there's enough capacity on some of the voting precincts that are very close to the 4,000 limit. It affected about 566 streets, that's changed, you know, from previous precincts, and then, most importantly, on the voter, voter number, we've estimated roughly 12,000 voters. So that's, that's the amount, it's about just under a third, I think, of voters that would be affected by these changes. So that's, that's it. I'm not sure if you have some questions for me, on the, on the streets, or any, yes, it's from a presentation point of view.
I think it looks good, you know, it gives it room to grow, which is, I think, one of the things we're looking for. And I think the lines are clear, where we would know who's where, but not the owners there. John, anything?
John?
You all have something to say, or comment on it? I guess the next thing we need is to, our next meeting, approve, approve it.
Approve, right, let's just work.
And the next one is, okay. Any questions? Need, thank you so much for coming down and explaining this case.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, have a good day.
Thank you. If not, we'll go ahead and go with our agenda, the new vendors list. Good morning, Judge Commissioner, if you should have a copy of the vendors list in front of you, we've got five new vendors, and we do those, and we recommend they get through. Motion to approve, second to approve, discussion. Honored per please eye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next thing is claims. Yes, again, you should have a copy of the claims in front of you, when you leave the claim, and then you can. Is there a motion, John?
Second.
Second, discussion. Honored per please eye. Oppose. Motion carries. Under reports, we had the Texas Assessor, however that, we received their report last meeting, so if there's any questions, I guess we need to call her and ask, make any update. The next one is the auditor, Mr. Peddles.
I presume you all have a copy of my report. So this report is for the month of October 2021, it's our first fiscal month, first month of our fiscal year, ending September 30th, 2022. On page one, Part One reflects the reconciled balances of the General Fund at 1,331,893, Roden Bridge Fund at 60,958 with 2 cents, and the Payroll Clearing Fund at 388,611 with 33 cents. On Part Two, we reflect the expenditure report for the General Fund, as of October 31st, as a percentage of the year elapsed, at 10,3121, 31 days, or 8.5 percent is elapsed. In summary, the General Fund amount expended year-to-date was 1,679,895, or 8.29 percent, which is slightly below the 8.5. Breakdown of several departments are reflected on the bottom of Page One and continued through Page Two. The departments exceeding the 8.5 percent for the year elapsed are reflected in bold. On page three, Part Three reflects the expenditure report for the Roden Bridge Fund, as of October 31st. Summary, the Roden Bridge Fund expenditures amount expended year-to-date is 467,489, or 7.15 percent, which also falls below the 8.5 percent for the year elapsed. And below that, you see a breakdown of the numbers of some of the departments within the Roden Bridge Fund, Consolidated Fund. The remainder of Page Three and continued through Page Four, we have a summary of the revenue reports for the General Fund and the Roden Bridge Fund. Year-to-date revenues collected are 60,562, or 0.30 percent, and 31,459, or 0.48 percent, respectively. Page Five reflects a summary of revenues and expenses for the Enterprise Funds as of October 31st, 2021. International Bridge reflects revenues of 179,481, with expenditures of 108,844, which gives us an excess of 70,637. The Gas Operating System reflects year-to-date revenues of 95,163, with expenditures of $66,203, or an excess of 28,960. And finally, the Solid Waste Transfer Station reflects revenues of $5,819, with expenditures of $29,087, or a deficit of $23,268. Page Six reflects a summary of debt owed as of October 31st. The total current balance is 1,715,855. That does show a new amount for the participation with the City of Roma. We've included a beginning balance of 730,712, which is based on the financials provided by Hart Silva as of 2019 and 2020. So that's a revised number on that one. Behind the, go ahead.
That number does not reflect, what are we paying down in 21?
What we were paying down before was being reflected against a balance that we had calculated based on the previous year, on 18 and 19, so that, that number's going to keep going up and down. I believe the, the number that we had prior was higher than the 712, or whatever it was. So we brought that down to, say, 300,000 or 400,000, and now this is the revised number. This is the starting number, based on those years.
For the year that we're in, this is the revised number at the end of 20?
19 and 20, correct.
19, 20, so 2021 is not the.
No, no, we don't have those financials yet, so we, again, that'll be adjusted when that comes out, and so that number will fluctuate again. Behind the reconciliations, you'll see that I threw in some expenditure reports for the ARP funds. The first page is going to show the county-wide amount, and shows the balance that we have, the balance available, and the amount expended year-to-date and encumbered.
Okay, another question. This would be, the General Fund, you have to, you're consulting for General Fund, that's one of the issues there, or what's.
You've got the General Fund, the Roden Bridge Fund, and the payroll clearing.
Those are COVID money, or?
No, 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 the reconciliations are normal reconciliations for those three funds. Behind that, you've got an expenditure report that shows the budgeted amount, along with the amounts expended and encumbered for the month, and an available balance for those funds. So you've got five pages of those expenditure reports, starting with the General Fund, and then the four Commissioners, four precincts. And that's mainly just for y'all to look at, to keep track of it.
Mr. Peddles, one other question.
Yes, sir.
On the, on the rainy day fund, you know, I had asked that the money that we had last year and this year, rainy day fund, let that not go over to General Fund, or to fund balance. Let that amount of money, at the end of the budget year, be, I guess, removed, and put in a separate account, so that we know that that money is there, in case of, whether it doesn't happen, but a hurricane, or anything like that, that money is available, and not necessarily fund balance, where we could use it for anything. This would be just a rainy day fund, in case we run into a bike, is that being done?
I know I talked to Sam about that, and I think I meant to get back with you to see exactly how, how you wanted to do that, because we can't really remove it. It's still there, but we can maybe reflect it, we can reflect.
The state government doesn't, they move it into a separate.
Are you saying a separate checking account, or just a fund, just on the books?
Well, either way, as long as it's, it's there, so that we know exactly.
It's segregated, so we know where it's at.
And how much we have in fund balance.
Yeah. Let me get back to you on that. Any other questions? No, thank you.
Thank you. We have a presentation, and this is Nadia Stevens, CM Company Auctions.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing us to approach. I'm Greg Chittam with CM Company Auctions. My South Texas representative is Nadia Stevens. We want to talk to you today about your surplus equipment, and some of the things that we can do for you. We liquidate all kinds of equipment, seized assets, forfeited assets. We can really take the stress off of being able to market your equipment that you pulled out of service. And, and everybody knows, if you get it out of service, it starts getting cannibalized, and it starts deteriorating fast. We're not asking you to put any of your people on that project, we do that work for you. We do everything start to finish, we arrange the auction, we catalog all the lots, we collect the money, we do the auction, complete it, collect the money, do the logistics, and hand you all a check when we're complete. We've been in the business for over 20 years, and we think we could be a real asset to your county.
This would be any type of equipment?
Any type of equipment.
Office supplies?
Any type of equipment. We sell all kinds of equipment, heavy equipment, real estate, just whatever you have. We'll keep your, we'll keep all that cleaned out for you.
What's the percentage?
10 percent. 10 percent. Right.
And all this, was really offered, and you be online, they charge it extra 2 or 3%?
Sometimes we do, sometimes we have some that are 10 percent, but it is, it's expensive to put those auctions on. Our web hosting and that kind of deal is very expensive, but we, we work for our money. I mean, what, what it costs you is making up in the difference. And we're not asking your people to come out and describe it, and catalog it, and take pictures, we do all that work.
I understand, but I said, what are those, the companies? Because I watched your doctor, and the bottom line, they charge 2% or 3%, and then 3% more to when you buy the credit card or debit card.
Right.
So actually, you've got to pay an extra.
Right.
Buyer has to pay an extra 5%.
So our normal commission rate's 20 percent.
20?
20 percent's what our normal commission rate is. And so, and I know that sounds like a lot of money, but when we put our advertisement to it, and all our work on the ground, it, it will pay off. We can make, we can achieve those goals, because we have that bigger buyer group.
So you charge 10% to the seller?
And 10% to the buyer.
To the buyer.
Yes, sir.
So the 2% if it's, if it's online?
Well, it's just 10, 10 and 10 is the way we do it. Now, bigger items, some of the bigger items are less money. Some of the bigger items are less money, but our general commission, if we're selling for the public out here in the field, is 20 percent. We'll bring the buyers to the board, we have people all over the country, and in Mexico, and Canada, we can, and right now, equipment's high, the longer you let it set, you know, it just deteriorates. If we can keep that harvested for you, you'll be surprised at the results. We sell for a number of counties already throughout Texas.
This is just the presentation, so.
Yes, sir.
So then, if I understood correctly, it's 10 percent, let's say we're going to sell some equipment, it's 10 percent from us, and 10 percent from John's, or we're.
Right, right, on the seller, buyers end.
And if it's bought by online, it's going to be an extra percentage?
No.
Just, or no?
No, it's 10 and 10. And everything's hosted through our site, we, I mean, I've been in business since 2000, we've had thousands of completed auctions. So, I mean, we've sold for drug task force, sheriff's offices, all kinds of counties, banks, so I think that we can, I think that we can really help you out, and you don't have to pull somebody out of the field to do that job.
And all auctions are online as well?
Right. Right.
And Ms. Stevens, your, your office where?
I live in Orange Grove.
But in McAllen, or?
No, sir. Our main office is out of Abilene.
Out of what?
Our main office is in Abilene, Texas.
So both of you are Abilene, I thought you have an office here locally?
No, we just, everything's digital here. Everything we do in this part of the country is digital.
Any other questions? Thank you for.
Thank you for your time, y'all have a great day.
Moving on, our regular agenda item number eight, and this is to extend the declaration of a disaster through December 27th.
Second.
Moving second, discussion. Honored per please eye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item nine is a final approval of Tierra Santa.
Good morning. Tierra Santa is a commercial property, and it's ready for final review.
Commercial property?
Tierra Santa, El Alto Bonito, Eloy Zarate.
Well, I'll be through there, and then you'll just have to check that, but I had to ask, that before you put somebody on the agenda, any, uh, pledge that it might present, I want to think, oh, it might be checking on it.
Okay.
That was a fact, and, and I, I got it out of, it's open, I, even though I went through there, because the owner called me in.
Okay, the engineer was the one that called me, that, to put it for final.
Anyway, I know some of them are, it's just, um, commercial property, it's not an existing.
Second. Motion, second to approve, discussion. Honored per please eye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item is to approve a resolution for grant number 4384201, from the Sheriff's Office, Chief.
Judge Commissioners, good morning. That's a grant for body cameras.
So, moving second to approve, discussion. Honored per please eye. Oppose. Motion carries. Items 11, well, you all want to pick those separately, or you want to, this is item 11 by itself, this is a, to accept a donation for the party department, prison one. Is there a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve that.
Moving second, discussion. Honored per please eye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 12 through 15 are also donations, and this is on behalf of United Wake, where they're donating $800 to prison one, three, and four, and.
Not a one, four?
One, two, and four, and three is getting 1,800. Is there a motion?
Should I get?
Moving second, discussion. Honored per please eye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, I have the checks here, so.
I'm in the prison three.
1%. Item 16 is also to approve budgets, and this is here, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20, are to approve the budgets, I have not seen them, I don't know if Mr. Peddles has, huh? You have not?
I think we submitted the attachment to our email, Judge, to ask for it to be, but we can go ahead and table it. Okay, that's fine, Judge, we can go ahead and table it.
So if you wanted to speak on them, that's okay?
Yeah, I would, Judge, real quickly, last year, I'd like to note, last year was the first time that the court had issues with the budgets. the first time that the, the court had issues with the budgets, because of the amounts that were requested initially, and we worked through it, I think, over two months with the court. As I had mentioned before, we had never really done specific budgets. This year, we had very detailed information to go off of our expense reports, and I'm happy to tell the court that one of the concerns that, that you had, Judge, was that it was very inflated at some points, there were some four-hundred-thousand numbers that I had thrown out there, two-hundred-and-fifty and whatnot, even from the numbers that we had decreased from the initial time last budget cycle, we've decreased it even further. One of the accounts, we've decreased by more than half. Last year, we requested a, a budget of two-hundred-and-fifty, we're down to like about a hundred-and-ten, I believe it is. Several of the other ones are also being reduced. Part of it has to do with the court paying for the iDocket database that we use, which is part of the entire system, that the entire county uses, the iDocket system, which JP's, district clerks, county clerks, and all that, my office had been paying for that, I believe, like about ten years, that we had been the only office paying for it, and the county did graciously, about a year ago, no, about four months ago, added to the county roster, and so those numbers are being decreased, are gonna be reflected as well. So I just wanted to let the court know that we are tapering it to the proper, to what's actually being spent, not these large numbers that were thrown out initially, I remember, Judge, it was kinda sorta like a, a, too much water into a, a funnel just comes out, and I understand the apprehension, because we had budgets of four-hundred, three-hundred, all over the place, and we reduced those significantly, so, if we can table them, Judge.
Can the court to, to table this, because I haven't seen it, and Mr. Peddles has it here, for our next Commissioners Board Meeting, if it's okay.
It's a lot of, it's quite all of the discretionary...
They're not out of the General Fund, that's the only difference.
It is not from the General?
They're not from the General Fund, that's the reason.
I do have a motion to table, is there a second? Second, discussion. Honorable per please eye. Oppose. Motion carries.
Commissioner, just, just a clarification, I just wanna make sure that, that, that way it's understood that it's not from the General Fund, I wanna make sure, because I know just that, as he was talking earlier to Peddles, there are enough moving parts in that machine that I don't wanna get it confused with the General Fund, that's the reason.
Items twenty-one through twenty-five are budget amendments. I have a motion to, to pass, but...
Take it.
Second, discussion. Honorable per please eye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. I've got ten and thirty-five, and the section five-five-one-four-zero-seven-four. We were going to executive session to discuss order of salaries, the ASO, and to discuss acquiring legal representation for lawsuit by JW Power Company against the, the Sainus or Taxicab. We'll be back shortly. At eleven forty-five, and we're back in open session. First item we discussed was order of salaries.
Second.
Moving to second, discussion. Honorable per please eye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next thing we discussed was the ASO, and that's just information, so what's needed. And the last thing we discussed was the lawsuit, uh, this is a, but it was filed in three first, and everything, a motion to...
All information on that?
We need information.
About various admissions, uh, for...
Okay, okay, so with information, so we're actually... Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moving to second, Honorable per please eye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.